Maria Davies.
Here.
Susan Edmondson.
Yeah.
Ruth Johnson.
Present.
Ryan Westco.
Present.
Paul Kaufman.
Here.
Tim York.
Here.
Kim Bailey.
Here. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Motion passes unanimously, thank you. Informational items, draft of strategic plan.
All right, appreciate the opportunity this evening to visit with you about our work to date, and I'm pretty excited to be at this stage of the process after what started back in the summertime, and the board's very aware that we had conversations about the process of developing our new strategic plan or revision to our strategic plan and how we would go about that. And we've got input from the board back in the summertime about what some of those key priorities might or should be, and we've started then with a process to get a lot of patron involvement, and it included a working committee of 50 folks that were representative of our stakeholders throughout the community. You know, we had teachers, students, parents, staff members of all types, senior citizens, community leaders, kind of a wide range of representation. And I'll be honest with you, whenever we sent out the invites, I assumed I would get a 50 to 60 percent positive response rate, and all but two said yes. And the two that said no are only because their schedule just wouldn't allow them to participate. So, and they were very active, they were there consistently. I would say we averaged at least 45 folks at each one of the meetings. So that part of the process went really well. And so through the process, we also then also got feedback from the community at large. The work of the committee was vetted through a community-wide process, and that helped narrow the scope and focus on what we were really wanting to emphasize through our planning process. The document that you have in the folder this evening is a, just a textual draft. We've got a more refined draft that has more content in terms of visual appeal that we're working on. Michelle Stidham's put that together, as well as the one-page draft that you have in front of you, this is kind of a summary document, and those we'll have ready for you next week with any changes that we might need to address based on our conversations tonight. With the community feedback process, you know, we started with lists of 10 or 12 key strategies or important strategies within each focus area, and that helped us, that feedback helped us narrow it down to the ones that we thought were most important. And I'll commend the committee for really honoring the feedback they got from about 750 stakeholders who either came to the forum that we had or responded to an online survey. So that part of the process was very good. Michelle, if you'll scroll back up to the top, there is one early change in the document that I want to mention, on the first page, or, yeah. The vision statement itself, we had had some discussion on that last summer about it, you know, might need to be revisited, and so we did that with the committee towards the end of the process. The revised draft, as it is right now, based on feedback from a variety of different avenues, is a future-focused community with a commitment to lifelong learning. I think it's better than the one we had, the previous one was turning today's learners into tomorrow's leaders. I like our mission statement much better because it talks about what we do every day, but that was the general consensus in terms of about 20 different drafts that got floated around and got feedback from the committee process. So, kind of wanted to point that out to you. It's not a game changer in terms of the nuts and bolts of what's really going to have to happen in the district, but I think it represents at least somewhat of an improvement over what we had before, from my perspective. So now, Michelle, if you'll kind of scroll down. Just want to hit these at a fairly high level. You've had a chance to see all this information before at one level or another, but obviously our first focus area is around our having success-ready students throughout our school district. And the first three strategies that are mentioned are all interrelated to a certain extent, and there was definitely feedback from our stakeholders about having things be more real-world, closer connection from school to what's going to happen after school for our students. So whether it's real-world, hands-on learning, and that project-based, problem-solving type skill, and connection to career and industry and college and things of that sort, you'll see that theme throughout that one. And I would argue that the expanding the STEAM opportunities is in the same vein. You're still looking for opportunities to get kids closer to what the real world looks like, very similar in the development there. And then the third strategy about soft skill development. I continue to read and hear reports about how the public sector and private sector both are needing more students with those soft skill talents, being able to work and collaboratively with others, being able to communicate, stand up in front of somebody and talk to them and do those things. So those three are all related, in my way of thinking, in terms of prepping our students for the reality that we have today.
And just for clarification, they're not listed by importance, it's just the way they were enumerated within the strategic plan?
That's correct, that's correct. They aren't rank ordered in any way. You can see, I also included the community engagement report, so you can at least see if you haven't looked already at how things rated in terms of the general community. So all of these had positive feedback and high numbers. So to say one is necessarily hierarchy than the other would be kind of an overstatement, I think. They're all important, so they aren't necessarily ranked. And that's important because when you start talking about resources and budgeting and things like that, we have to look at all of them at the same time. Good point. The fourth strategy is expand mental health supports for students and staff. That was fairly strong through the survey results and something that we've been talking about. The question is how, when, and where to accomplish that, and so we've got some ideas built into the action steps to help us start down that path in a more concrete way. And then the last one is more of a persistent issue, the reducing gaps in achievement through interventions and supports. We've done a lot, and we've tried a lot, and we continue to work hard at this, but it's very difficult to move the needle in a significant way. So I think it remains something we have to be attentive to, finding ways to provide additional supports and interventions to help all of our students get to their max potential. So I'm glad that filtered its way through the process. That was important to me, at least. Before we go on then to the next focus area, was there any questions about the student success, success-ready students area in general? And again, for the board, you guys have seen a lot of this already and not much new. One thing I would add that I didn't mention already is the fact that when we asked the community to give their feedback, those top three or four things were very self-evident, and they're included in here in a strong way. Some of the other things that got some interest, but maybe not as much as these, were able, we were able to fashion them into action steps to support a higher strategy, if you will. So I would say out of the 30-some strategies that we surveyed with, I would say at least 20 of them showed up in here in one form or another. Through the merging of the process, and you need to realize, the revision process had multiple, multiple steps. There were about three different revisions through the committee process, and in between the committee meetings, administration was looking at it, and our district leadership team, we were just trying to constantly fit all the interests and pieces together and try to make them in a coherent way if we could. So, any other thoughts or observations? All right, moving on to high-quality staff. Establishing a market-competitive salary and benefit plan was actually the number-one indicated priority on our survey information. And KU Public Management Group that helped with collecting all that feedback went through the analysis of taking all of our staff members out, who obviously have a potential bias in that kind of a question, and it was still the number-one identified response in terms of a strategy, important strategy. So at least for the 750 or so patrons who took part in that feedback process, that was really important. And obviously, we did the EMS study about five years ago now. It identified about 10 to 15 percent gap with our market. And while we've done a lot of the EMS recommendations in terms of structure and things of that sort, we haven't closed that gap very much in terms of that market competitive. We've done some structural changes, but you know, there's just a resource piece of that that we haven't been able to get as far as we'd like. And it shows up on our scorecard that we have now that the workforce satisfaction indicators haven't moved as much as some of the other indicators that we've had.
And so the difference in the resources amongst the different districts? We all get roughly the same rate from the state. Is that correct?
Well...
Because it's, what we get paid, we get paid based on the number of pupils that we have in attendance, and so we get the same as other comparative districts of our size. Is that, is that correct, from the state, from the state?
In a general sense, yes. It's got, within that structure, there's an attempt to do some equalization based on local property values and stuff like that. But in terms of, at a comparative tax rate, I would say yes. To the extent they have a similar tax rate, our state resources are going to be about the same as well.
So where the difference in the resources are coming from between us and the other district is what's happening within our district, without the local?
At the local level, that probably drives the majority of the differences, we would see. And it's a combination of two things. It's, and we're going to talk more about this in the next agenda item, but some districts just have more property value within per student or per pupil within their district, and others just have a higher tax rate, and some have both. So those variables come into play here. And we'll get into more of the resource question, I think, later in our next agenda item. So obviously, that was a high-profile one from the survey responses, and the committee agreed with that. Ensuring appropriate class sizes and caseloads, that's something that every district needs to do all the time. And I would qualify this by saying, it doesn't say we're going to reduce class sizes and caseloads across the district. What it says is, we need to analyze that, we need to be intentive about that in terms of what we need to do with that, and ultimately, it feeds into the budget development process in terms of what we want to do in that regard. Because the reality is, whether it's a new staff position, a new program that we want to offer our students, salary and benefit enhancements for existing staff, that all ends up competing for that same pot of money, if you will, and so that becomes a district-wide budgeting decision. So there are places, though, I'm sure, within our district and our system that we're stretching the rubber band further than others. Let's just kind of put it that way. So that's why we want to keep looking at that. Strategy 2.3 is something that I know the board has been sharing interest with over time, and that's building, scroll back up just a little, building that positive environment within the school district through a variety of different ways. We've got, you know, recognizing accomplishments, mentoring, ongoing mentoring opportunities, collaboration, planning time. We've done some things in that regard in the last year, especially with the schedule adjustments we did at the high school and the middle school. So now it brings up the elementary as our next area, well, how can we provide them more time for that important collaboration and planning work? And then the last two steps came mostly from Lisa, if you'll scroll back up, Michelle, and that is, you know, all of our jobs in the district have some level of administrivia, paperwork, things, clerical typists of things, and other forms they need to be engaged with, or curriculum they need to access. And to the extent we can automate as much of that stuff over time, it frees up their time to do other things that they, I'm sure, feel are more important. And then the ongoing feedback, that evaluation and reflection process is important for all of our staff members. And our belief is that the better job we do at that, the more satisfied they're going to be in their role and their contribution level to the district and to our students. And then the last one is more about the professional development and the ongoing training and support for our staff members and how we can promote that over time. So some of the data we're going to look at a little bit, you know, shares with the fact that one of the things that separates our staffing, our employees as a collective unit in our teaching staff, or some of the districts that perform at a higher level, is that they actually do have more experience in the classroom in terms of years of service and higher percentage with advanced degrees. And those are the same districts that tend to perform extremely well as well. So these things all kind of play together in the grand scheme of things, so that's something we need to be attentive to. And we'll get into some of the data here in the next agenda item. Any questions on the high-quality staff focus area? And I would just say, any of the committee members, cabinet members are welcome to add to anything I've said, if you feel so inclined.
Doing a great job.
Okay. I'm just trying to make sure I cover, but...
Doing a great job.
Don't want to leave anything important out, so. All right, if not, we'll move on to the third focus area. And the most debate we had in this area is what to call this focus area, so we've kind of gone back and forth, and we relied in the end, I think, on the wisdom of one of our high school students on the committee who said, you need to make sure you pick words that everybody's going to understand, and use language that everybody's going to understand. And so my favorite topic there was resource optimization for a header. That's what I kind of liked, but using the wisdom of our committee, we picked something a little more straightforward, it's more descriptive, if you will. So when it comes down to financial responsibility, obviously, we want to make sure we're utilizing our resources to the best ability that we can. I think we've got data support that we're doing a pretty good job at that, based on what we're going to be looking at and what the committee looked at, but that's an ongoing thing. That's a never-ending thing, so we want to make sure we address that. Maintaining healthy fund balances is something the survey was very strong in, in terms of what the community expectation there was. In the previous plan, our target was 23 percent plus or minus 3 percent, so it's a range of 20 to 26. Well, we've made some targeted investments over the last couple of years, and especially this last summer over finishing up all the building projects we needed to do. So we're going to be down in the 16 to 18 percent range at the end of this fiscal year, if our projections are correct. And so with that, we need to be conscious about, we've, you know, used those balances for specific purposes, but we're to the point now where we need to probably hold tight or maybe improve them slightly. So that was, that was clearly feedback from our community. And the steps you see there in terms of action steps are things that we, to a certain extent, have been doing already, but we need to continue to do, do long-range planning, multi-year planning in a lot of different areas. We've done it in two or three of the bigger areas when it comes to some of the things we've looked at, but we've got other areas where we could do the same thing. So that's one of the things there. And there's also a communication-related goal there to make sure our stakeholders are, again, being informed on an ongoing basis about how we're utilizing the resources they give us. So that's obviously important. The next one is actually an area, the identify community partners. That was actually an area that for some time was actually being discussed as a potential separate focus area, community engagement type of piece. And the discussion of the committee was, ultimately, there are community engagement opportunities in several of these focus areas, and if there are enough connections to the community within those, it wouldn't necessarily have to be its own standalone. So that was the fourth area that the committee considered, but I think in the end, this is an example of where there are opportunities for us to build relationships with all types of organizations, both within the school district and beyond, partnerships with business and industry, service organizations, even more than we do now. So that's part of what we want to make sure we maintain and build on the community engagement processes we've had in the last two or three years. If you think about it, we had a long-range facility planning process, which led to a bond issue process that was heavily built on community engagement, which led to a boundary revision process that was...
Definitely rescheduled, Michelle.
Yeah.
Do not, do not restart now.
A boundary revision process, and now this strategic planning process that was heavily community engagement-driven, if you will, at least from my perspective. Probably, and I would, you know, give credit to the board and your leadership on the fact that you've encouraged us to have processes like that. I think that's important for the community to have the opportunity, at the very least, to participate in any of these big, major discussion points for our district. So obviously, as board members, you have a huge leadership role in that, but you're more informed if we involve more stakeholders, and we want to make sure we continue to do that in all areas. I'm okay if we go a year without one of these major district-wide committees, but that's okay. It's important stuff, and we need to stay on top of things.
And Carrie, and what I'd say is that, you know, the plan that's been developed so far, you know, I think it's, it's, the scope is narrow enough to where you can really focus on some key areas, but it's robust enough to where it doesn't need to be revised every year. I mean, this, I think, you know, some of the action steps under it, you're going to want to revisit on a regular basis. But as far as the overall driving plan, I think this will serve the district for quite some time.
I couldn't agree more, and I even mentioned in the development process, that one-page part in the front, that, you know, the old plan had eight focus areas, 30-some strategies, 100 and over 100 action steps. The thought that you can accomplish all that in a five-year window is unrealistic. This is much more focused, and I've taken some time as we've gone through this process and looked around at other high-performing districts throughout the state, and they typically have three big pillars, if you will, in their planning process, their strategic plan, and they're not dissimilar to what we've got here. There's some theme or some similarities. They may have different strategies to get there because they're starting in a different spot, but focusing on success-ready students, your staff, and then managing your resources tend to be the three big rocks that a lot of districts focus on. And if we do those well, we're probably going to do a lot of things fairly well throughout the district. So to your point, I agree that keeping this more focused is going to be a strength of this strategic plan compared to its predecessor. We had a lot to work on. I think we've done a lot of work in that area. I think now we're, it's appropriate to be a little more focused in what we do. So that's good feedback. And then the last one is something that is an ongoing need, and I'll just, without quantifying it in great detail, we, you know, since probably the state budget crunch and the budget issues that showed up, you know, in the recession 2008, '09, '10 range, we probably have pulled back quite a bit on investing in facility maintenance, and it's just been a competing interest thing. And our hope was, through the bond issue, that we get some of that taken care of. And while we did a lot of renovation and investment in the high school building, there wasn't enough money left over to do much work in other places in the district. So that's still an important need for us, and it's not something that most people will see as really obvious. I mean, when you do a parking lot, people notice it. Most of the other stuff, when it comes to roofs and HVAC systems, it's infrastructure that people don't see on an everyday basis. So that need is still there, and within the next five years, we need to go back and revisit our long-range facility plan as well. Now that we've gotten into our new alignment, my hope is that we can stay in our current situation for eight to 10 years without a major change, kind of like the last alignment was. But the reality there is, we need to have a plan for that next step in the future. And maybe it's setting triggers for when we need to go start seriously considering a second high school or something of that sort, or when our growth is going to dictate that we're going to have to have additional space, either elementary or middle school or otherwise. So that's, and then, so that's an ongoing need there, and I, that's another area where the list could be as long as you wanted it to be, realistically. And the reason I'll share you one piece of feedback there, a lot of our HVAC systems were revised back in 2006. We did the first push on our energy management program and really replacing a lot of rooftop units, putting in the control systems that we rely on now to manage our energy efficiency the way we do. But those machines now are 12 years old, and a lot of times, by 15 years, they're failing. And so, you know, that 15 to 20-year window is what you have, basically, before you're going to have to replace a whole bunch of equipment that was put in in 2006, 2007. So that day's coming pretty quickly, and it's going to be a pretty high cost. And there's one more. Michelle, if you'll scroll to the last page there. And this one, I'll be honest with you, I was surprised the play it got in the community feedback. I didn't know, this is, this is kind of our continuous improvement, Baldrige's mindset that we've had in our district for some time now, where we're constantly looking at our performance, we're looking at what others are doing, that we're benchmarking ourselves to, to try to figure out, how can we get better? What are other people doing well that we can learn from? And I wasn't sure people would understand this enough to rate it as high as they did, but it came through fairly strong on the feedback. So I'm glad it's here. At our level, at the board level in particular, it's hard to know what each, you know, each grade level, each building, and each subject area are doing and performing on a regular basis, but to the extent we're managing this high-level data and trying to make sure we're using best practices, and if we're, if we're not getting the results we want, you know, what can we do different, who can we learn from? That's what this is really all about, and I'm glad it's in here. I was pleasantly surprised that it came through the survey as strong as it did, so.
You know, in this section, the one thing I would encourage is that we strive to be the benchmark.
Yep, no doubt.
You know, I'd love it for other districts to be looking at us to benchmark against, and, you know, we set the standard.
I think that happens now. I think there's always, there are a group of districts, even the metro in particular, but even statewide, that we're measuring, we're doing some of the same things in terms of comparing benchmark data, which leads to conversations between the folks to my right here and their counterparts in other districts about what do you guys do about this, or how you're addressing this issue. So that's been part of my challenge to them, is to make sure they're asking those questions. Dr. Volker gets tired of hearing me talk about NIXA and their achievement results and...
That is true. But it's a good reminder. I do have to give Dr. Monzus credit in there, and at this measure in particular. He brought this attitude. This is an attitude that he has instilled in our whole group, and this is important for all of us. I was just at a conference, speaking specifically with a district from St. Louis, Fox, regarding information. I said, oh, you're a peer comparison district. Let's sit down and talk. And they looked at me kind of funny, because we have that idea. We have those people that, we strive to make sure that our kids get the highest education, and we're willing to beg, borrow, and steal to get there. And it was funny, because they said the exact same thing when we got to talking. Oh, no, we know you. You are a similar size, demographics. We look at what you do as well. So I think this is important to do, and Dr. Monzus has brought this mindset. It's a part of what we do now.
And I think we'll know when we arrive, when people at DESI say, what does Ray Peck do?
Well, we get those phone calls from time to time, and they feel good when you're asked for feedback and input, so that's appreciated. And we're glad to share anything that we do, because hopefully, there's something we're going to get from a two-way exchange in that regard. So I do think this is important, and there's an old saying, what gets measured gets done, and so it's important that we follow through. Which leads me to kind of my next discussion point, and that is that this is kind of phase one of this plan. If you recall, in the other, in the prior plan, there were SMART goals developed under each one of these, and then we developed a scorecard to measure our progress in these important areas. We still need to do that. So this is, this is kind of phase one of that. Through the course of the spring, we would work on developing those and getting our measurements in place. And several years ago, through this process, we revised it early on, the strategic plan, to put those SMART goals in, because a lot of times, we didn't have baseline measures on a lot of things. And that'll be true of some of the things we're going to measure here, that we don't have a, we don't know exactly where we're at right now on some of these, so we need to get that established, and then we can write better goals moving forward. So there's another phase that's going to come with this document, but that might be summer retreat time before we're looking at that, that next installment, if you will.
There's one other thing that I would add, as you're moving into that other installment. You know, on the first page, you talked about the mission and the vision. You know, it's hard for people to internalize those a lot, but what people can internalize is mantras. And when I coached entrepreneurs, I would always tell them, you know, have some type of tagline that kind of, you know, enveloped your business. Nike's is just do it. You know, that's something that everybody can internalize and that it's meaningful. So as you move through the next stage, if you could develop a mantra as part of that process, that that way, you know, all staff could internalize, it just helps people to focus, I think, sometimes on, on the plan.
Yeah, we were looking at some of the draft vision statements. You know, some of those would fall into that category, you know? So I forget now if it was Adidas, it was just beat Nike or vice versa, or something like that, and...
We went through a couple of those options.
And Blue Valley, for a while, had one that was just beat Finland, because they were trying to compare their district's achievement scores with Finland as a country, because it was a high-performing country, so...
But it's funny, and how people can rally around that, and how it could even be a source to drive morale and competition, and it's interesting, the personal dynamic that it brings.
Any other thoughts or questions on that? So there will be another phase of this development process, but this was the heavy lifting that needed to be done to get, get the high-level priorities taken care of or addressed. Again, the committee did a tremendous work, tremendous amount of commitment and engagement. It couldn't, that part of the process couldn't have gone any better in my mind, so I'm really thankful for their efforts, and we'll, we're going to recognize them appropriately here in the very near future, so we'll feel...
Well, I'd like to thank the staff, you know, coming off of a year that we've just had of all the rebounderies and opening new buildings up. You guys had a lot on your plate to begin with, on top of this. So thank you for all the extra work you've put in. And I would reiterate, too, we had a great group on that committee, and they were all very engaged. I mean, it was amazing, just... And they were all very engaged. I mean, it was amazing, just the table talk, what you would learn from the person sitting next to you.
All right. Any other questions? The plan would be then next week, we will have a little bit slightly different version of that. And basically it's going to have a little more formatting and photos and things kind of woven into the document. So it'll look a little different, but the content won't change unless, you know, unless you guys are really feeling strong about something that needs to be adjusted. And I haven't heard anything so far. So I think without any other feedback, I think we'll be ready to bring that to you next Thursday night at the regular meeting for approval.
I think it's a well crafted document.
All right. Appreciate the feedback and the response. And again, thanks to this team and the committee as a whole for helping us make this happen. Because, you know, the key for a good strategic plan is to make it something that has meaning over time. There are too many times in the past where districts would write a comprehensive school improvement plan. And when they were done writing it, it would go on the shelf and then five years later, they'd pull it back out. And that's not, that's not how we want to manage our operation here, if you will. So this was an important part of the process. And I do like the fact that it's much more narrow. There's a lot of heavy stuff in here. But it's more focused than the one we had previously. And so I think that's good.
And I would say the work that's been done the last five years on the previous one is what allowed us to get to this point.
All right.
Yep. Continue. All right. We are moving on to resource discussion.
So in anticipation of this meeting, we prepared a variety of documents. And we know we've been having informal discussions over time about, you know, what is it going to take to really make that next step as a district? And the reality is, there are a lot of things in this strategic plan in terms of strategies and action steps that we will be able to do with our existing budget. By reallocation or just focusing time and energy and attention to certain things, they can be accomplished. But some of them are probably bigger ticket items that might be difficult to get to or to move the needle on substantially. Without at least having some conversation about additional resources. You know, we've done a lot in the last several years of adding opportunities for our kids. International Baccalaureate Project, Lead the Way, Southland Caps, you know, technology integration, expanding our summer school. Just a lot of different opportunities for kids that weren't there just a few years ago. And I've talked about the fact, and it'll be one of the measures, I think, in our success ready students. Part of the scorecard is for all of our kids, when they leave us, to have something beyond their diploma. Whether it's, you know, college hours, a certificate and a specialized program, whatever it might be, having something more. But those programs take development support over time. So obviously we need to keep our focus there. And I do think we've got evidence to show, and if, Michelle, if you'll go to the first document on the list there. We've got evidence to show that we've done a pretty good job of what we worked with in recent times. And you've seen a version of this previously. I think we looked at it in one of our retreats last summer and the committee looked at this document too. I've shrunk it down. Uh-oh. So while it's restarting, you may have to open it up on your computer. I can speak to it even if it's not on the screen. So basically here's the summary of this. We looked, and I've done this, I think about every year since I've been in the district, is to kind of look at the achievement of our school district as a whole. In terms of our state assessments or ACT or any other measure we might have. And when we do that, we like to see how we compare to others as part of that benchmarking process that we discussed earlier. Well, what I found is within the Kansas City metro area of districts of any size, we tend to fall in that between top five and top 10 range pretty consistently from year to year. So in two thousand and six was the last time we did a full review of the data.
I hate to interrupt, but it is still projecting for the, it's still recording, correct?
Okay.
So even though it's not showing, people can see it.
So the folks watching the recording are seeing this diagram.
They're seeing the documents.
All right. So you might share each other's computers if you want to look at it on there. So basically we ranked the districts in the metro area and based on student achievement outcomes. And we're consistently in that top five, top 10 range. I think we've been as high as five and as low as 10 in the five years that I've done this, four years that I've done this. We are just now able to get some of the data to do the 2017 results. So this is already your old data here. So I just want to make that clear. That we didn't until the last couple of days have access to some of these data points on the DESI website. Our ACT that year was tied for fourth in the metro. That was one of the stronger ACT classes we've had. So that's why it's probably a little higher than even our MAP EOCs. I think this year when I looked, we were like seven or eight in MAP EOCs and about seventh in ACT. So that pattern is fairly consistent. The interesting thing there is we pair that with some of the resources and we have a relatively low operating levy compared to this group. We have relatively low expenditures per pupil compared to this group. And because if you get right down to it, 75% of our operating budget is typically going to staff salaries. Our teacher average salary ranking is very similar. And so that pattern flows throughout the data. And there's been a lot of discussion over time and research that deals with whether or not more money matters in education. And when you look, say statewide at the state of Missouri, the answer is not really. Because you're measuring in a big pot of districts of all types. And you have some very rural, low spending districts who have pretty good performance. And then you have some high spending urban districts that have relatively low student achievement performance. And when you mix all that together, it ends up being a correlation line that's fairly flat. There's not a big, strong deal. When you look though, I think it's more telling if you look at comparable, high performing, in the most case suburban districts in our region. It does appear that there's a connection between resources and achievement. That average teacher salary and expenditure per pupil lines up fairly closely with student achievement among those districts. So I think in a smaller sample of more comparable districts, maybe it does matter. So that's, we started our discussion in the summertime at retreat based on looking at some of this information. And I wanted to revisit that before we move on to some additional information. So Michelle, for the benefit of the audience that's watching online, go ahead and switch to the levy impact scenarios. If she can even do that. Or is it frozen on the other screen?
She's almost back.
All right. So one of the things we wanted to look at is if in fact, we want to address something, some of these higher ticket items. And some of those higher ticket items, obviously is the market competitive salary and benefits, facility maintenance items. Depending on what the opportunities would be, all those expanding student opportunities and programming could have price tags with them. Some of that, again, we could do with our normal budget that tends to grow two or 3% a year. And we have the flexibility to decide how we're going to manage those resources. But if we want to make material differences in some of those other areas, it may take additional resources. So we want to go at least through the exercise of if we were going to have a discussion with our community about increasing our tax base. Which by the way, has not increased since two thousand and three. That was the last time we had a voted increase in our operating levy. And I believe it was about 45 cents roughly at that point in time. Haven't looked at it recently, so I'm kind of going by memory. We put together a little bit of a scenario here where we could see what extra levy might generate. And we started with our current assessed valuation. We assumed a growth of 2% a year. Michelle will catch up with us here in just a second. And we had a nice bump in our property values across the district this past year due to reassessment and due to new construction. But the caveat to that is reassessment was above the consumer price index. So by Hancock Amendment, we actually had to lower our levy because the property values went up. So that's a reality most of the local jurisdictions had to deal with. So we went through this exercise just to give examples of what extra cents in our operating levy would generate. So you'll see that, you know, 40 cent increase is a 2.2 million roughly in year one. And then assuming a 2% growth would grow from there. And if you get up to say 90 cents, you're getting close to $5 million of additional revenue with something that would grow from there. There's a reason why we started at 40 cents and I'll explain it because it really is depicted in the bottom chart. So Michelle, if you'll scroll up just a little bit. So we are in a unique situation in our district's history from a financial standpoint. We grew so fast in the 2000 to 2010 range and built all those facilities, had to increase our debt service levy. Had to borrow a lot of money to build, to construct those schools because of the rapid growth in additional students in our community. So with that, our debt service part of our levy is roughly a dollar 33, which is relatively high by metro standards. So you'll look, the higher growth districts tend to have the dollar 20, dollar 30, dollar 40 type debt service levies. And then some of the slower growing or not growing districts will have less than a dollar in their debt service levy. We are at a unique point in time to where even with the recent $27 million bond issue. We are to the point now where we can lower our debt service levy. We really haven't had that opportunity at any time in the last 10, 15 years at least. But we're to that point now finally to where property values have grown. We have refinanced almost all of our debt to, you know, historically low interest rates. And other than the $27 million we just borrowed in 2016, all of our other debt will be paid off in five more years. So the East Middle School bond issue has got after this year, five more years worth of payments and it'll be paid off. At that point in time, even with say a 30 cent decrease in our debt service levy. We could levy, we could bond our entire debt capacity at that point, or at least we believe so, without increasing it at that time. So we could go from a dollar 33 to a dollar 3 without jeopardizing our debt service fund and making our payments on that part of the debt. So we again are in a very unique situation to where if we have that conversation with our community about increasing our operating levy. We can talk to them at the same time about lowering our debt service levy. And so we know we can lower it by 30 cents. And we've got a separate document that we don't need to put up here because the numbers are really small. But we went through our financial advisor to confirm the fact that we could actually lower it 30 cents. And with reasonable assumptions, we'll be fine in debt service for years to come at that level. So that's a good part of the analysis. So any number that you see in terms of an increase, you can build into that assumption that we would decrease debt service by 30 cents. So that's why on the bottom part of the page here in this scenario, we've got all those same levy price points, 40 cents up to 90 cents. But when you decrease them by 30 cents, now it's 10 to 60 cent range. And then we went through the exercise of, you know, what does that mean for a property owner in terms of annual or monthly costs? So these are example figures and obviously, you know, depending on where our property owner is, theirs would vary. The average home value in our district is probably somewhere in the 170,000 range, maybe to 175,000. So it would be somewhere left of that 200,000 column. But that would give you kind of a rough idea of what a more typical impact might be. So that's just a kind of a reference point there and we'll come back to it later, if you will. So Michelle, any questions on this? Again, over the last six months, I've had several people, so what would it take? And so the idea here is to try to paint a picture of how much money it could generate. And then we'll get into another scenario here in just a minute.
Question.
Yep.
So as we move forward, if we choose to go down one of these routes. Can we educate people on net levy increase as part of the language?
Yes. And the answer to that is we absolutely have to because the ballot language itself, we can't say in that language by statute that we're going to lower debt service. That is a separate mechanism, if you will. So the ballot language will include the higher number. All of our communication will have to include the fact that we're lowering debt service by 30 cents at the same time. Which immediately begs the question of, does that mean you're going to lower it 30 cents regardless? And I'm ready to say yes. I mean, we're to that point where we can do that and sustain our debt service fund, there's no reason why we wouldn't at this point, in my way of thinking. So that's, I think it's going to be critical regardless of what the board decides to do. That all of our communication is going to have to talk about both facts. Fact that we're increase, decrease, net, and communicate everything that way. Hoping that we educate that voter so that if they have to make that decision at the ballot box, they know what the rest of the story is.
So just to clarify, if we lowered the debt service by 30 cents. We would still have to have a vote to raise the other side by 30 cents.
Exactly.
Lowering one doesn't mean the other one automatically can increase.
That is correct. Any vote to adjust the operating levy is a standalone vote. In debt service, they don't actually vote for a levy. They vote to issue, authorize you to issue bonds. And the levy can be set whatever it needs to be to pay off those bonds. So there's two separate mechanisms, operating levy versus debt service levy.
With the debt service levy being something the board votes on.
Within the parameters of what the state auditor says you can set it at.
So as a way to demonstrate good faith to our community. Would it be in our best interest for the board to go ahead and make the reduction in our debt service? Before we broach the subject of going out for a levy?
Yeah. The timing of that is a little delicate in that the only chance you really have to do that is at the time you set your rate in August. So that's a once a year opportunity. So, you know, whether or not the board could take action to say that they're going to do that, I don't know if there's any binding way to do that. I think it has to be more about, you know, making the commitment that we're going to do it and following through on it. But in terms of the mechanics of timing, the only time you get to really do that is in August when you set your tax rate.
Would you explore with our attorneys if there's a way to bind the board into that type of an agreement? Because I believe that everybody would agree and make that choice.
That's a classic example where trust is important in developing trust over time. And I'm hoping from the work we've done over the past couple of years and the work we might do moving forward between now and any potential election. I think we can, again, there is no reason for us to maintain it at the level it is right now. We are to the point now in our debt service calculation to where we're going to have to be reducing it anyway next year, just by the nature of the calculation. And we think we can get to 30 cents and go ahead and do that now. And we've had our financial advisor verify that. So. So that's one of the supporting documents. Again, I don't know that we need to really look at tonight, but it's got all the math in there as to how that works. So. And again, I think it's going to be surprising to people in the community to hear that because they just approved a bond issue in 2016. But the truth of that is, had I known what our property values would have done. Crystal Ball would have told us what to expect moving forward at that point in time. We might have bonded a little bit more and done more of the maintenance type work that we're, you know, now, you know, now looking at trying to address through our operating funds for the near term. And I don't want to complicate things. We could in theory do another bond issue just for maintenance things. But I think I'd rather focus on the operating side right now and use some of those funds to address that over time. It needs to be built into your ongoing budget in my mind over time so that you don't. We need, we are, there will be a point in time in this district where we need all of our bonding capacity for square footage for additional students. So that's why I think trying to address it through our regular operating budget makes more sense for maintenance items.
Okay. So that brings me to another question. Even reducing our levy. Would we still, if we retire all of our bonds, would we have the bonding capacity to build a high school?
I think at the end of, like five years from now, once we are down to only the remaining part of the $27 million bond issue left to pay. I think we're going to be in the 60 to 70 million dollar range in terms of bonding capacity. Does that build a brand new high school in today's market? Probably not the full blown 1,600 student type high school. But the reality is I think we will do some kind of phasing process when we get there. So I think at that roughly dollar level, debt service wise and available bonding capacity, we will be able to grow into what we need at the time. That's my best guess, crystal ball, based on what I know right now. And that actually gets easier if assessed value grows faster than the 2% range that we assume here, which is very well good. You know, given where we're at right now, barring, you know, another housing recession like we saw eight, 10 years ago. So. But that's a good question. And I do think we are in a position where lowering our debt service levy 30 cents is sustainable for a long period of time. So that's the best judgment I have based on the information I have right now. So. So Michelle, if you'll go to the next one. This is one attempt to try to identify how, if we had additional resources. And this is true whether it's through an increase in the levy or just our normal 2% or 3% tendency to grow our revenues from year to year from all the various sources combined. We have been for some time now doing our budget planning around, focusing on areas in our strategic plan. And trying to identify the places that were the resources would be best used. And my natural bias has been. And my, my natural bias has been trying to put it into our existing staff as much as we can, but also increasing opportunities for kids. So the board always has that wrestling balancing act with, we get into that budget discussion in the spring about how to prioritize all that. So that's an ongoing thing, but we tried to at least quantify, you know, that there are buckets of money within the strategic plan that we would need to invest and, and depending on how much you had to invest, those percentages could change and they could change from year to year. Year one might have a bigger percentage in one category or another. Year four, year five might have a very different look to it. So this is again, just a sample for discussion purposes. And we would, in our budget development process, flush out what those percentages are. But I do want to say the reality is if we're going to really work on market competitive salaries, I think that high quality staff is going to involve a good chunk of that new resource, if you will.
And that's because we need a big bump to catch us up from not having a levy for ten, fifteen years and.
Yes, we're, the gap is still there and it's significant. And again, our, our staff is seventy five percent of our operating budget. So that's where we spend our resources now. So to make an impact on it is where we would have to spend a lot of our resources. And I'll also point out that the increased opportunities for our students that come in that success ready students category comes with staffing at times too. Not every case, but some of those cases require additional staffing as well. So the combination of staffing is going to still add up to seventy five percent more than likely regard, the combination of those areas.
Well, and, and seventy to seventy five percent, I mean, that's not just within education. I mean, that's, that is worldwide. I mean, that's business. I mean, that's, that's just your average percentage of what your average company spends on, on its staff. So I mean, that's pretty, that's universal across all industry.
Yeah, especially any service based type company like we are as a, as a public school district. So again, this could fluctuate from year to year and, and that's part of the board prioritization process we'll, we'll go through together in the spring. But I just wanted to kind of share with you that there, there are different places where you'd have to use the resources to support this plan. All right, so if you'll move on then, Michelle, we'll get into the nitty gritty of what the, what this could look like. And I, I want to characterize kind of the hill we have to climb, if you will. So as I mentioned earlier on that very first chart, that we're pretty consistently in the, you know, between that five and ten range in certain, terms of student achievement and our resource comparison tends to follow that same general line. We just, and, and the other qualifier is that chart was two thousand and six data. This chart you're looking at is the current year, two hundred, two thousand and sixteen data, sorry. This chart is current year. So this is current data comparing those same ten districts on different cells within their teacher salary schedule. And the reason we use our teacher salary schedule for comparison is because it's the most easy and straightforward available information for us to compare district to district. And it's the biggest chunk of our budget. So it's the place where we spend the most resources. So with that, we took these districts and kind of broke them down into three tiers, if you will. And the reality is those top three districts on the list have the highest teacher pay and they also have the highest student achievement results. And they are considerably higher. You'll also see their average years of experience tend to be higher. They're about thirteen and a half and the percentage of teachers with advanced degrees is higher. You get into the middle tier and those are the students academically we compare with probably more favorably. We do a pretty good job and a lot of times we can get in front of one or two of those districts from year to year. But there's still a bit of a gap and they still tend to rank higher than the districts in the third tier, if you will, in terms of what they're able to do in terms of teacher compensation. So the top three are one, two, three, almost consistently across the board. And then we're right down in the, the upper end of that bottom tier. And what I would tell you is from my perspective, we as a community in terms of resources and being competitive with those top tier districts, I don't know that we have to get to that level. And I don't know that our community would support the kind of levy it would take to get to that level. Lee Summit, you know, is a full dollar, which is, you know, roughly twenty percent or more higher than we are in terms of tax levy and, and Blue Springs, Park Hill, Liberty and some of those districts are in very comparable situations. So I, I think the closer we can get to them, the better. We need to close that gap. We need to be in the top part of that second tier, I think, to be realistic in terms of recruitment and retention over time. That's just my professional opinion and I think depending on, you know, who you talk to, there could be a wide range of balance of what the community would support in terms of financial support versus what we would need to do to be truly competitive. Again, I think we do very well with what we've got. But long term, making that next step in my assessment is we need to make sure we're recruiting and retaining the best people we can. And that's going to take some commitment resource wise.
I want to make sure that, that we properly vet this, this conversation. So I want to ask a question. And I want to ask it delicately. You know, as you're looking at the teacher salaries and, and you're kind of going down, the question is, does paying a teacher more make them a better teacher? Or is what this chart showing that because you can offer more for a position, you attract a higher caliber of staff member into your district and then are able to retain them? So just because, and, and again, I, I, I want to be careful.
Right.
You know, just, just because you pay somebody more doesn't mean they're going to be any more effective. The question is, is that i- if we make this, if we make these choices to do this, can we actually look at our constituents in good faith and say, you know, if we do this, we get better? As opposed to, I, I won't even say that.
I know where you're heading with this.
Well, so I, I, I just want to be sure that, that, you know, we're not just looking at something and saying, hey, if we throw more money at it, this solves the problem. But I mean, if it's because we can bring in a higher caliber person, we can retain the ones that are the higher caliber from going to the other districts that, that are in this position, then that's something that I, you know, I feel comfortable that yes, we can say. I just, I, I just want to make sure that we're looking at the data properly.
Yes, no, I, that's a very fair assessment. And the way I would describe it is this. I think at, for our existing staff, there is no doubt ongoing professional development, investments we would make in them as staff members in this high quality staff vein will help. A, improve their opportunities as staff members to serve our kids and work in their teams better. Okay, so that's important. It's not, this is not a standalone, just because you pay more, things are going to change. So I do think there is an obligation and a need to continue to support our existing staff that's a resource based discussion. But I think probably more importantly, what you're touching on is the big picture game. And that is this is an arms race in, in some ways of looking at it. We, especially now in times of relatively low unemployment and a narrowing market of high quality people entering the teaching profession is getting more and more difficult to make sure we get the very best in our classrooms in front of our students. And my worry is that if we don't address this in the very near future, we are going to end up missing out on some of the best candidates that are out there that are getting snatched by the districts higher on the list without even applying here. We don't, may not even get a chance to interview them because there's enough of a difference at the starting point. Or even at year five or ten of their career when they're making their, kind of their family landing point decisions and they could still make a move, they're not necessarily considering us when they've gotten that experience in other districts. So I think it's some of both. I think it's an opportunity to support our existing staff. But I also think this is a ten, twenty year, twenty five year investment that we get the people to apply and come to our district that might not otherwise because they see that it's a long term investment that the community is going to make in them, so.
Well, there's also a nationwide issue with getting teachers. I, my sister's down in Texas and they're significantly low. Like what is it, two hundred a district that they're not able to find teachers to just fill the positions? And Missouri is not very far from that. So this gives us a competing chance to at least have them come in and compete with these other districts.
And I think one of the things that you were touching on, it, it's been the advantage of private schools for a long time is that they've always been able to go out and see who's the best and then bring them in because they've been able to offer a salary that's, that's difficult to get within, in the public sector. So if we can even start to move more to that, then we can retain and attract that staff, so that, that's.
Well, I, I, to me, I think it's a matter of recruitment at all levels. And, and then we're using again, teachers as the example here. And I want to reiterate the fact that the, the, the comparative gap is there in all of our employee groups. So even though we're using teachers as the example, what we're saying is we would need to do something similar for all of our support staff groups and li, and likewise to, to make sure that we're competitive in all ways. So it's a, it's kind of an across the board need, if you will. But we focus on the teacher in part because for our teacher candidates, the expectations and the rigor of the credentialing process is getting much more difficult. That's why some of the numbers are going down in terms of people really wanting to pursue the field. And so I think because it's harder to become a teacher now than it was when I started, I think that we're going to have to get more aggressive. And, and quite frankly, it is, for lack of a better term, a twenty, twenty five year competition right now for the best. So I, I think, I think it's, it's getting to the point where we're able to fill all of our positions. But as new people come in, we want the chance to bring them to be just a little bit better than what they would have been otherwise. And maybe a lot better depending on what the opportunities are, so.
And my fear is, is that if we, we've been asking our teachers to be very patient with this process. But we've started losing some of our teachers who grew up in Raymore, came back and was teaching here, taught here for years, but then had to leave in order to support their growing family. So we're, we're starting to lose the people who were deeply invested in our community. And, and we'd like to keep those. We know they're committed to our students, so.
And we have the data from our exit surveys that would tell us that salary is usually not the only issue when somebody leaves. It's some other change in their family situation or there are a lot, several contributing factors. But it is one of those factors that when folks leave that does get cited from time to time.
Well, and, and, and one of the things that we want to make sure that we do is, you know, especially going to our taxpayers, you know, they, they were gracious and approved our bond, you know, last year. And, you know, or is that, is that last year?
Yours, yeah.
I was going to say, it's, it's, seems like it's forever ago, even though it, it really wasn't. You know, that we want to make sure that we've done our due diligence. And, and so that when, if, and if we ask for additional money, that they know that we have, we've looked at it from all angles and that we've vetted it so that they feel comfortable supporting us in our decision to take it to them. And so that's why, you know, I, we have to ask the hard questions to make sure that, that we have done what's required of us.
Yeah, it's, there's no doubt it will, anytime you ask a community to increase their, their tax rate, you have to have all the right justifications and be, be ready to talk about it. And I think we're ready to have that conversation.
And, and, and to go for, I, I think our, I think our teachers are def- definitely worthy of it. I just want to make sure that, that we ask those, the right questions so that when somebody asks us, we can look at them in the eye and say, without a doubt, this is the right thing to do.
What, what I thought was fascinating is through the strategic planning process, that was hands down the number one response by, by a decent margin. So this is not just the board saying we need to do that. The, and we had a large percentage of people involved in that strategic plan process. And, and that was the feedback our community gave us. And, and it wasn't like, oh, there's just a little bit of variance on that. It was the strong number one. And that was even after you took the teacher feedback out of it. Even when you took the teacher feedback out, just our community. And that, that wasn't even everyone that had students in the district.
Yeah, I was impressed with how many that caught that even though they, we didn't, we don't talk about that all the time.
Yeah, there is, there's a, a good percentage of people who don't have students in the district and aren't teachers that listed that as their number one. So I, I feel like we are trying to be responsible to our constituents. And that was the feedback they told us. So it'd be irresponsible of us to not be responsive to that.
And our, our community has a history of always supporting our school district. We, we've, we've been blessed to, to always have that i- i- at some level. I, the last time that we went out for a levy, you know, that when we did it, there was various levels, which I'm sure we're going to talk about that in a little bit. But even at the first and second level, there was overwhelming support for it. Now, there was a poor decision to go for a higher amount and.
That wasn't this board.
No, it wasn't.
Or this administration.
Right, I, I, in, in fact, I think I'm the only person that's left.
Oh, it was you.
It, no, it wasn't me. No, and, and that's fair because I, I, I believe I was the lone voice of reason in that conversation.
Actually, I think you weren't there when they voted.
I wasn't, so. But, but the issue with that is, is that, you know, our community has always supported it. And, 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 and we've benefited from that. And I just want to make sure that, that that trust continues.
We definitely have a case to make and I, I'll walk you through this next scenario just to give you a sense of, again, trying to put some context to what the scale of discussion might need to be. So I, I've been racking my brain all fall trying to figure out, okay, how do I put this together? And I don't know if this makes any sense to the board or the community yet at this point. But Michelle, if you'll flip to that next example and blow it up a little bit. This was my attempt to talk about what we could do or what it might look like to do some higher level of investment in our salary schedules for our staff. And so the history here is if you look at our teacher's schedule over the last four, four years, basically, we've increased four, five years, I guess now. We've increased the base salary by maybe twelve hundred dollars in five years, something to that effect. I'd have to go back and look at the exact. And it hadn't increased two or three years before that during the lean time. So increasing our schedule by a thousand a year, three years in a row is just a hypothetical example that I wanted to walk you through to kind of give you a sense of what that might look like. There's no magic bullet here, but it's, it's significant enough different and more than what we're doing now that I think we could make headway on some of the districts that are ahead of us. In that I'm recognizing upfront that they are likely to be trying to improve their salary schedules at the same time we'd be trying to improve ours. But I'd want to be doing it at a pace that's faster than theirs and maybe significantly faster than theirs. So to me, this is the, probably the lowest point to, to target to try to make up some significant ground. It would need to be this type of investment or more to really try to change the math, so to speak, if you will. And so it's, I've, I've gone through what would be a three year exercise. And again, at the top, I've put an important qualifier in there in that even though we talk about adding dollars to the base of our teacher's schedule, it's, it's got the similar analysis that we do most years and that we try to do a similar percentage throughout all of our schedules, if you will. So that's just the baseline assumption. So we look at what our current salary and benefits expenditures excluding health insurance. That's a whole nother pot of money, so to speak, and it's not driven by the salary schedule choices that we make. It's impacted by that, but it's not, it's not driven by it. Right now, we're estimating for next year, a step increase for all staff would be about six hundred and fifty thousand. And that's what we at the very minimum try to accomplish each year through a budget planning process. And my expectation was make sure that happens every year. I don't want to live through the discussion of frozen recovery steps ever again, okay? So I'm glad we're past that point and I do not want to revisit those. And I've told our leadership team and I think Team Ray Peck, I'll make budget cuts if I have to to avoid that in the future to a certain extent. So I'll qualify that just a little. So that's six hundred and fifty thousand. If you add to it then, if you're adding a thousand to the teacher's schedule and implying that to all of our schedules, it'd be about nine hundred thousand more. And then I carry that forward to year two. Do a similar exercise with the idea that both the step increase and the base increase would go up at a rate each year slightly. Do a third year of the similar thing. And in the end of three years, we'd have an additional four point eight million roughly in salary and benefits, which instead of having a roughly five percent increase, it would be closer to twelve percent over that period of time. Now again, I, my hope would be we could do more than that, but this would be at least a, a starting point, if you will.
So, and I recognize we're dealing with hypotheticals at this point. Off of this model, does that bring us within, so I, I, again, I'm just rounding numbers because it's easier for me to do that. So let's say that our salary difference is ten thousand because ten is an easy number. So we know we're not going to get up to ten, ten thousand dollar difference because that would be a huge levy. So, but we're wanting to get in the same lap, so to speak. So this would get us, if we're doing a thousand in addition to. So this would get us, if we're doing 1,000 in addition to the steps, does that bring us to 5,000? Does that bring us to 7,000? Does that bring us to a $7,000 difference?
Or maybe another way to ask that would be when we're looking at those tiers, right now, we're kind of in tier three. Does that get us to tier two?
It would be.
Tier one, top tier two?
It would be still in tier two, but I would hope we could get into the top part of tier two. In that, and we'll come back to that in just a minute. I might have lost my train of thought. I was going to try to cover a couple of things. Oh, I know what I was going to say. Before we get into that math, rather than looking at average salary, you almost need to look at your schedule itself. In that, remember that in some of those other districts, their teachers with master's degree is a much higher percentage. That's a different mix of schedule distribution. Obviously, some of them have higher years of experience. That increases that cost differential. So from a recruitment retention standpoint, the more realistic schedule look at is the one of the comparison chart that Kim's referencing. So we're going to go back to that here in just a second versus the average salary piece. So the answer to your question is adding 3,000 to the base in three years won't close a $10,000 average gap.
Right.
But you've got the collective effect of our average years of experience, I think, would go up as would a percentage of teachers with advanced degrees would go up. Over time, that gap would close in part because of less attrition. So that's part of the math that goes into that, and there's no way to predict that. There's no model that I know of that would predict what that's going to look like.
And I recognize this, in many ways, this has to be a process, not an event. And I don't want it to be a 15-year process to close that gap.
Right.
So that might be in the next conversation.
Yeah, so let me finish a piece of information here. And the reason I split this into two parts at the bottom of this chart is for a reason. Is because the step increase, in my mind, is something we would typically do anyway. So I'm not including that into the new resource discussion. So in fact, the, we probably, you know, we've been doing averages of 2.5% to 3% the last several years. So it might be out of that 4.8 million total, half of that would be resources we might otherwise already have available to us over that period of time. And half of it might have to be new money or a little bit better. So it's not that we have to make up the whole 4.8 million over three years because we have natural growth in our revenues typically. You know, just look at average over time, it's going to be that 2% to 3% range typically.
Referencing back to the chart that had all the different districts on it.
And that's where we're going next, so.
Okay, so the question is, is do you feel that some of those higher performing districts, the ones that are higher on the scale, do you think that they're where they're at because they did this incremental thing five or 10 years ago? Whereas basically, so basically, they had this conversation that we're having tonight a decade before us. And so they've just, as they've grown, that's kind of where the salaries have ended up because of the incremental growth, because they just made the decision to do it a lot earlier than we did.
I think, yes, I do agree that that's true. So Michelle, go ahead and flip back to that list of 10 districts.
Doesn't our lack of business base also play into that?
You're hitting on some key points here. And we're going to mix all this together in real, in a real hurry here. But to Ryan's question, I think it would be safe to say our current levy has been essentially what it's been for 15 years. I would, I would guess if we went back and looked in the history of these other districts, that all of them would have made incremental improvements or increases over time. They, some of those districts at the top feel like they're in an arms race with each other. And so they're, they're doing kind of the one-up game, if you will, as a community. Because I've heard a local business person say that your, your tax rate, your tax rate for education and your average teacher salary tells you what you want to know about the quality of your school district. It's the biggest leverage point you have is to have high-quality staff members in front of your kids. So under that scenario, not that one, Michelle, back to the one, the salary schedule comparison. So within that, I would suggest to you, if we went back and looked, nearly all those districts ahead of us have had increases, maybe multiple over the last 15 years since we had our last increase. So I think that's a reality. And to Ruth's point, some of those districts have significantly more property value per student. So each penny drives more in their local communities. That's not true of all, but Platte County is an example. Their operating levy has been more comparable to ours. In fact, I think they're, on that 2006 list, were lower than we were. They've got part of the airport in their district and their tax base per pupil is a lot more. So they can generate more with any given levy amount. So you've got a mix of that. Carney, or no, excuse me, Liberty has a really high tax levy, but their property values per pupil aren't that high because they've tiffed almost all their commercial development within their school district, their community has. So you'll see a variation throughout all of those districts. But the reality is those communities at the top of that list have raised their levies considerably over time and done it sooner and more aggressively than what we've considered in our district. And again, I am proud of the results of this district. The return on investment was high when I got here and I think it's still high. So I think our community is getting pretty good value. But if we're going to add some of these STEAM opportunities, they take resources. If we're going to try to get a little, we want to get to that top of that middle tier, get more competitive at that level. Adding 3,000, if you added 3,000 to our base, just using this as an example, if we did it all at once, we'd be at 38,200. We'd be in that top tier, but obviously, they're going to move during that time. So the reality is I think we'd be the top of that second tier or close to it. And again, that $1,000 example for three years is kind of where I think the minimum would be, what we would do or want to do if we want to really get.
You're saying minimal. It depends on what we decide for levy.
Right, right.
If we do a higher levy, we could do that quicker.
Quicker rate, right.
If we lower, we'll have to go lower.
We're getting to the million-dollar question here. That's where we're going, so.
But I think another point here to make is that even though we might just keep pace with the top, the problem is, is that we're not moving further to the bottom. And so, you know, it's the, you know, the opposite side of the coin is even though we're not, it's going to be difficult to catch first place, the further that we can move from last place is still a huge. I mean, and when we're talking about student success, that's critical. You know, because, you know, one of the main drivers of student success is student-teacher time. It's face time with your teachers. And if we're having to go to greater class sizes because we're falling further and further behind, I mean, that just means that we're going to be working backwards as opposed to working forward.
And I would spin that in another direction in that the top-tier folks, I'm guessing, in this, this analysis have probably maxed out their existing levy. And there is a tolerance where the community is not going to do a whole lot more. I think the greater movement's going to be in the middle tier. The folks there, the Liberties and the Green Valleys and Platte Counties, Carneys of the world that we're, we're going to be competing with, they're going to be trying to move at the same time we are. So that's, that's where I think we need to make the most ground on them in the short term if we can. Because I, I'll just be honest with you. I personally believe that we don't have to be at the tax levy level of those top-tier districts to get nearly the same results. I plan on doing it better than they do or as good as they do with the resources we have. That takes a lot of good things happening in a lot of different areas throughout the district. But that's, that's what I see our challenge as, as a district.
And thank you for saying that.
So that's, that would be my intention, so. So we're going to get to Paul's question here in just a second. I wanted to, Michelle, if you'll share that levy comparison chart. I did add one table today, and again, this is one-year-old data. Nope, there you go. Just to give you a frame of reference, I went through and collected the 2016 tax year, which was last school year's tax rate data. It's available on the DESI website for all school districts. And I broke it down, basically went through all the Cass County, Jackson County, Clay County, Platte County districts in the metro of any size. So you basically have the 20 larger districts in the Kansas City metro excluding Kansas City Public. I didn't put them in this analysis for, well, through this table only had 20 lines. That's all I could do in a Google. And I thought if I had to pick one to kick out, whatever. And there is a reason for that. I'll qualify why I didn't include them in a different way. So I don't want to leave a bad impression here because they're our friends. So they no longer have any debt service levy whatsoever. They have been a contracting mode for a generation now, and all their debt service levy has expired. So their operating levy is around $5 roughly. So they're not, you know, in terms of operating levy, they're in the top half, but their overall levy, since they no longer need any debt service, is not, not included. So everybody else here has 60 cents to $1.40 or whatever in their debt service levy. So that's why they're more comparable. That's why, that's the real reason why they're not on the list, so. But just to give you a sense, we are, out of those 20 districts, we are clear down to number 18 in terms of total levy. We've talked a lot tonight about the operating levy, and we're going to get into Paul's question shortly about what kind of increase would it take to make a real difference here? But we wanted to kind of share the context of what other districts throughout the metro are doing. And so we are, you know, just, the truth is, this is your old data. Our levy is actually lower than that now. We're 10 or 12 cents lower than that right now. Yeah, some, some went up and some of them had to roll back as well. So we'll, we'll be able in the next couple of weeks to get all their data points for this year and have this updated yet again. So we'll, we'll do that work, but I don't think the relative placement's going to change much. It's, it's clear that there are some, the net impact to the taxpayers in that right-hand column, the total tax rate. So for us, if we were to, say hypothetically, increase our operating levy by 70 cents and we could reduce our debt service levy by 30 cents at the same time, our number in that right-hand column would go up 40 cents. And we would still, at that point, be below the average of this metro group. But I can assure you, 70 cents would do a lot in terms of what we could do from an operations budget, just as an example. So that's why I wanted to put this in as a little more context in terms of, of what we think, what we think we could do and where that, where that point was. That kind of gets us into the neighborhood of Grain Valley, Belton, Carney. Those are the kind of middle-tiered, middle-tier districts that we were looking at previously, if you will. Oh, and by the way, we'd like to be closer to Belton at least, you know?
Got to be ahead of Belton.
I would, well.
I would actually argue that, you know, if we're looking at levy, being below Belton is actually better because we do more with less, and I think that says a lot about our staff.
Yeah, no, I, we've got a good story to tell regardless. And the reality here too, and let's be honest, our, the students and families that we serve are not the same makeup of all these other districts. Some, some have more challenges than we do in terms of what kind of services they need to provide to their students because of the level of poverty and things of that sort. So let's keep the.
Some have less.
Yeah, some have less, yes. There's no doubt about that. So we need to keep that in mind, that we, every community serves a little different set of constituents, if you will.
Well, and the other thing is that, you know, sometimes when you're comparing against other districts, you know, for those people who live in education, that means something. But to the average person who, you know, you know, they might see a Friday night football game score or a basketball game score. That's really all they know from the districts. The question is, if we're going to increase a levy, what does that do for us internally? I mean, I mean, we, we put it on a scale of, okay, you know, this makes us comparable here because we know what that means internally. You know, does that mean, hey, we get to offer six more classes? Do we get to, you know, when the county, we just went through this process and put a new tax on. Well, to the county, that meant 18 more deputies on the road. You know, that meant being able to, you know, it was something tangible that people truly understood. And so when we're looking at a list, you know, what, what, what does that really correlate to that people can wrap their minds around?
Yeah, yeah, that's where these elements, that's why it's so important that we did our planning process this fall to help identify what the community thought was most important for us to address. So it's a combination of all the things that you see in the, in the, in the plan itself. And some of those are positions, some of those are programs, some of those are operational things like maintenance projects. But again, a big chunk of that would need to go to this compensation piece if we're really going to get serious about competing in this field, so.
And that was that 60, 20, 20 break down?
Right, right. That's what that chart was intending to represent. Again, that's a, that's a working draft we would need to flush out. And it's going to be a year-to-year decision point in the budgeting process. But I think that 60, 20, 20 is probably not too far off from what the reality is, what we would need to do with our resources.
So let me ask you this, and if you're going to address it forward, I'm happy to wait. So that 60, 20, 20 that we were looking at, if we did the 40 cent total increase, if you did the 70 cent ask, that's the 40 cent net, how much money in each one of those categories does that correspond to?
Okay, so if you'll flip back, Michelle, to the very first chart, and this is kind of what Paul was getting at as well earlier, and go up to the middle chart on that page. So walking through that, the 70 cent figure, just using that as an example, in year one, that generates 3.8, 3.9 million dollars roughly of additional revenue. So again, that net is only 40 cents in that scenario because we're going to be able to reduce debt service. But that 3.8 million, if the, you know, whatever 60% of that number is, you're in the 2.3 million range, you're, you're doing about that $1,000 or close to it and still leaving resources available to address those other pots. Now, that's assuming you're putting all that 60% into that. And there are other things within high-quality staff that may take resources. So it's, it's a rough approximation. From my perspective, if you want to kind of get down to where I think we could or should be talking about parameter-wise, if you're going to increase in that 60 to 80 cent range with a net of 30 to 50, I think we would be in the area where it'd be a fairly straightforward sell to our community that, yes, we're going to ask them for you to invest more, but we, there's enough there for us to make a significant difference in these areas that we've identified here, so.
Can I share a lesson from, learned from the past?
Absolutely.
As being one of the last board members that wasn't there for the vote.
I acknowledge that.
But, but no, and I, this is just playful banter. You know, if I remember correctly, there were three numbers that the board was looking at. And I know that the first number was somewhere around the 30, 35 cent range.
I think it was 35, yeah.
And, and that had, that had like 80, 90% community support when we did a survey, if I remember correctly. And I mean, this is some time ago. The next one was 50 cents. And that one still had 70% support from the community. At 85 cent, it was 50/50. It was a coin flip. You know, so if we're looking at an increase, but being able to roll back, you know, one of the things that, and again, I mean, this is old data. People have moved in, people have moved out.
And that was during a recession.
It was, you know, if we, if we look at an 80 cent with a 50 cent net, you know, to me, that would fall under that threshold that the community still supported overwhelmingly that would allow us to, to hit a lot of those things. And so, so as somebody who, who's went through that process once, you know, to me, as a board member, I would support that, you know, at the 80 cent level, just, just speaking from my tolerance of having been through that process once, once with that 50 cent net.
Here's my question to you, and this is through a therapeutic lens. 80 cents was pretty offensive last time. I don't want it to be a trigger point for our community.
And, and, and that's, and that's fair. You know, but I think, I think if people understood that it's a 50 cent net, because that, that was their, that was their tolerance then because of what we could demonstrate, what we could do at that level. You know, and again, it's, everything is different, you know, we have different people. I just, you know, to me, I think that is a more acceptable level that I think people would, would embrace because of, you know, just doing the cost-benefit analysis of it. What we can do with the 50 cent net, you know, in the operating budget, it just, it gives us so many different things to, to increase student success.
Yeah.
Just to throw something else out there, how does this potentially be impacted when the federal and state are keep reducing what we're getting?
Well, and that, I want to be a little cautious there because I'll just be honest with you. Our federal funds are relatively small in the grand scheme of things. So they basically, the things they require us to do, they give us very little money to support that. So you'll, next week, you'll be hearing our special ed program review and you'll see that we spend $6 million in special education.
Eight million dollars.
Eight million dollars and we get 800,000 roughly in reimbursement from the Fed. So it's a, that federal piece is likely to decline, but in the end, doesn't change the math dramatically. State piece is another issue. We, we have been very fortunate in our state. I've looked at research or data recently that shows that our legislature, to, you know, all the challenges we might have from time to time, they have been making overall increasing investments in public education in our state to the point where it's been slightly ahead of inflation. So we're at least not losing ground because of the state process. And as a growing district, we do reasonably well in the state formula because of the nature of how the formula works. So I don't want to. So, I don't want people to leave this discussion thinking that we've lost a bunch of state aid. I am worried moving forward that there may not be much new state aid. And in fact, if we continue down the path we're going, there might actually be less. But there really hasn't been the last five or six years. I just want to be fair in that, that analysis. But I do think there is a challenge moving forward of whether or not that's going to be sustainable based on the way they've structured their tax code and their budget process. So, a concern. But I, I, I want to give credit to our, our, our folks who represent us that they, they've done a pretty decent job in supporting public education with the resources, given the overall state budget as it is.
You know, the other thing I'd add, going back to the, to the previous time that, that we tried to go with the levy, we weren't really open with the information and, and the process like we've been this time. I, I think this time, the board, you know, we've, we've really have been, we've reached out to the community. We've invited them in, you know, so I think a lot of time, the last time, there were, there was a, an element who actually knocked doors and, and worked against the levy because I think they just didn't understand and, and they didn't know what the money was going to be spent on. And I think that they just, there was, you know, apprehension there where I don't, I don't see that this time around because I think we have been more open and forthright with, with the community, and they've been involved in the process. I, I think everything is different this time than the last.
And especially, you know, we, we now have a very good track record of actually openly and honestly having our community drive what we do from the boundary process, the bond, you know, that, that entire process. You know, we went into that with some configurations in mind, and the community came back with something that was different, and we, that's what we did. And I think that, that puts us in a good position. And then also, I think the key will be help trying to explain that we have been this 30 cent net thing, right? That's a result of us being very fiscally responsible over the past several years with our, finding those opportunities and taking advantage of those opportunities to refinance our debt and to take all of the proactive steps that we've taken to get us here. And that, that is because of our financial responsibility that we've been demonstrating. But conveying that and helping that make sense, you know, I think is a challenge. But it's good.
Right.
But it's kind of hard to explain.
And to the, you know, the folks that were in the room making these decisions some time ago, they didn't have the opportunity we have now in a situation where the economy's in a much better position. Our local community's, you know, in a much stronger position collectively. And we've got this opportunity to lower debt service at the same time. That, I, I didn't know when I took this job five years ago that this would even be an opportunity, and I'm glad it is because it allows us to ask the community to do more than we would have otherwise been able to do.
And, and I think through the strategic planning process and through some of the other things that, that you've done and some of the things that your staff has implemented, which is really speaks to, to their professionalism, is that we can actually demonstrate exactly what the money will be used for. And it, it's not, it's not a whim. It's actually proven concepts that will drive student performance, that makes the district better. And I think when you can actually demonstrate exactly what you want to use the money for and that it's worthwhile, it's a much easier ask than if you're like, well, you know, just, just trust us. You know, this is, it's, it's a diff, to me, it's a different ask. It feels different from a board, from a board member's perspective, this go-around than it did the last go-around.
I like the idea. I don't want to overburden our community with taxes. But I also recognize that the education system is significant to the success of the community as well. We're not asking so that we can be well above and beyond every other district. We're just trying to get to a point, to a place where we can compete. And all of the things that came back in the strategic plan were not outlandish requests. They, they were reasonable requests, expanding and improving our extracurricular, mental health. All of these things we would normally be doing anyway. The adding steam, all of those things. So, what they're asking is the same thing that we as a board are wanting to do and the administration. So, everyone is in line. I would like to be able to ask for as much as we think we can without overburdening our community, but that gets us close to doing everything that our community is wanting us to do. So, for me, where, where is that line? I would agree. I don't know that I would want to go over 80 cents. I think that the difference of a 30 cent offset, so that's a total of 50 cents, just to be respectful to our community. But I also want to make sure that we can have a good movement with that amount. What are, what are thoughts of the board? What are you, what are you guys thinking? Give, give us feedback.
I think that's 70 cents. I mean, obviously, I'm, I'm more on the conservative side. Just talking to people around the community, and even today when we were in the meetings, they were talking about a fuel tax and a road tax and, you know, different. So, I, I just don't want the community to feel like they're hit with too much. But again, if we can get out and communicate that, you know, this is 30 cents less than, you know, when it comes down to what you pay. To be able to communicate that to all them, to, you know, go to the different civic meetings and Foxwood Springs and different places to communicate that.
What are some other thoughts?
If, if we start out with 80 cents and we feel some pushback, can we drop it down to 70 or is it...
Well, let's, let's talk about timeline because it's an important question. So, you know, our, our next opportunity is April for that kind of consideration. We would need to make a decision on the amount at our previously scheduled work session in January. We'll make that a special session of January 18th, I believe. So, that gets us able to get something on the ballot in April. That's the earliest we can do something. But once we make that decision by that date, then we're, we're, we're stuck with that decision is, for that election cycle. Then we'd have to reconsider in a different one if, if something changes. So, it does have to be an informed decision. And part of the reason, and that's basically where we're at in the conversation, is what is your general comfort level? If you can narrow, I've, I've shared with you, somewhere in that 60 to 80 cent range, it makes the most sense for me. And at the 60 cent, we're going to be able to do some really good things. At the 70 and 80 cent range, we're going to be able to do more of those good things and maybe some additional things. I, I would, to the extent we can narrow that in, we could bring back to you in January at that meeting, maybe three different choices, and then we can decide that night or two different choices. I just need your help to get us into a narrower range.
I know to me also, the teachers that pay is important, but our buildings. I mean, we're so far behind on some of our maintenance and stuff. And like you said, the, the systems that here in the next couple of years are going to need to be replaced. Those are big issues that cost us a lot of money in the long run when we don't do them right.
You mentioned before that there was a survey to kind of see what the community would tolerate. Have, have we done any kind of survey like that?
That's a, that's a good question. I, I have mixed emotions on that topic in that those surveys cost money and they take time. I, I'm kind of relying on our historical trend, as Ryan mentioned, that we kind of know from several years ago in worse economic times that that 50 cent range was, had some support. So, a net 50 in my mind would have more support now, given a lot of better information, better data. So, we could, we could spend some money to get more accurate survey information. Well, I say that. I don't know for sure if it's accurate survey. It was roughly a $12,000 cost to do 400 phone surveys. And so, that was kind of the process to get to that point. And my thought is, if we're talking net 50 or less, that I, I think the survey, we'd have a pretty high confidence level of what that survey would look like.
And you'd mentioned...
Personally, so...
You'd mentioned before that we really can't go out and push this. We have to have committees that are formed from the community and...
As a district, we have an obligation and duty and a need to inform the public. And we can share all the information that we want that's just information. But the effort to encourage people to vote yes has to be done by a separate committee. So...
I'd kind of like to see who would be on board in the community to basically push this for us.
We have a man who does marketing. He was part of the strategic planning process, and he has stepped forward and really would love to head up marketing on that. So, we've had, coming out of the strategic planning committee, we have quite a few people who are interested in helping with that.
I'd say on the boundary committee as well. We had several people that were very engaged and wanted to help with stuff.
So, they're kind of for this and wanting to help. Yes.
Yeah, I think the strategic group really understood that to do the things they wanted was going to require more than what we have.
More than what we have.
Well, part of that process, if you recall, we had a whole binder full of data that we ended up looking at. And that, they, they were able to see that data up close. And we're going to take that kind of information and boil it down to very usable terms for our general public to inform them about what needs to be done or what, where our challenges are and what this can do to solve that. Kim, I'm sorry, I stepped on your...
Well, I, I think it's important to continue to reflect what the community wants us to do. And I think so far, we have gotten a great deal of very well, you know, put together information about what the priorities should be. But I don't feel like we've gotten any information on this. So, if there is time to put, to do a survey, to have someone do a survey, I think that is money well-spent personally because otherwise, I feel like I'm throwing a dart at the board up there in terms of what the community would really, what do they really want.
Well, I know I've talked to several of the people that were very against it last time, and they're completely...
Right. But, but I mean, I, I, I don't want to say, well, 40 cents when maybe they'd say 90 cents. I don't think that'll be the answer. But how do we know? And the difference between 60 cents and 70 cents is a million dollars, you know, and 70 and 80, I mean, we're talking, you know, significant. Maybe it's not a million. I got to do my math. Half a million. But I don't know if there's time and whatever, what other people think about the survey. I don't know.
For a practical sense, before January 18th, I don't think we would have the time. Yeah, because we, we'd need to do some kind of proposal to get somebody on board to do it.
If I, if I remember correctly, when we did the survey before, we're kind of having this conversation now, we'd already had the survey back when we were talking at this point. So, you know, if, if I could offer something, you know, I, I spoke as a board member earlier. Now, I want to talk as, as a taxpayer and as a member of the community. You know, my, my personal threshold, I, I look at the numbers up there, and I, I look at it in terms of my current budget. And then I also look at it when I was more underemployed. And my personal threshold is the, the 50 cent net. I mean, to me, you know, as I look at it in, in perspective of my own budget, you know, it, it, it fit me then, it fits me now.
When you say 50 cent net, you're saying 80 cent mark.
And, and the 30. And, and then I look at it from, from a different perspective, you know. I have, I've, I grew up in the district, you know, so I, I was, I was a recipient of people's tax dollars because I went here. I've had three children go through the district. So, for me, you know, I view it from a taxpayer perspective as an investment in the future to where, you know, it's time for me to invest in that next generation. And for me personally, I'm comfortable at that level. But I, I'm not speaking for anybody else other than myself.
My, so for me, my only concern with 80 cents is the trigger. The trigger number is that if they see that same number, that it evokes all kinds of bad memories. And then we have them voting no just because they don't like the number. But that's a therapist's viewpoint.
And it was 85 cents.
Oh, it was.
It was 85.
79. 70, well, so... So, so I, I, I think that, given, given the feedback that we received from the community during a recession saying that 50 cents was going to be okay, I, I think it's fair to, for the, for the, what we get in return for it, that's a very good investment. If we need to stay away from the number 80, I would go 75 or 79 or something other than that. Because I know that there, I was a soccer mom at that time, and I heard 80, 80, 80, 80, 80 countless times in a very negative connotation. So, 79.9.
And, and I, I can't argue with that because that's, you know, I mean, if somebody gets something ingrained, you know, I, I, I understand.
They're asking for it again.
I acknowledge that, and, and I don't, I don't want to, you know, go down that path. I, I do think that, you know, the, the climate is different than it was then. Because, you, you know, to be honest, I mean, if, if, and again, I, well, I don't want to divulge too much of what was said in closed session. But, but even, even the board was unsure of exactly what we were going to do with the money at that time. And I think because we were unsure, I think we couldn't convey it to the citizens. And I think that is what really drove the anti-movement was because we couldn't put things in concrete perspective for people to say, okay, you know, if you do this, this is what's going to happen. Because I think there was, there, there was even an unsurity amongst, amongst the rest of us. But I, I, I acknowledge that. And if we need to go to 70, I'd, I'd stay away from 79 or so.
I would agree.
You know, the, 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 you know, 5, 10s, 15, you know, that's more comfortable.
Well, here's what I would say. This is what I would like to see Dr. Muntz is, is the difference between 75 cents and 80 cents and what difference we get in terms of reaching the strategic plan. Is, is that something we can, or no?
Well, it's very subjective in that, well, a five-year plan and knowing what all these things are going to cost, when some of the work that has to be done is to get to the point of figuring out what we need to do and find out what that costs. So, for me to price it all out right now would be really difficult. So, that's why I really focus my thought and effort on the biggest piece of this puzzle.
So, the price difference would be between the 70, it would be a half a million?
It's roughly a half a million for every 10 cents, roughly.
Okay. So, if we're between 75 cents and 80 cents, it would be about a half a million a year that we're talking?
250.
Half of that.
Oh, half of that. So, 250.
Right.
So, if we did 75 cents versus 80 cents, if we did, then we're only, we're only short 250,000.
Right, right. If there's any hesitation of going to that number, I would just tell you right now, just go to the 75 and, and, and let's, we'll work off of that.
Well, did we, when we did our, I wasn't on the board, but when, the first time they did the strategic planning five years ago, whatever, did they have a, is big a community committee? Or did they even have a community committee?
They did. They had focused groups and did some survey work. But you have to realize, most of that data was collected in 2011, I believe, 2011, 2012. And we were still in, in a recession mindset and still in a budget-cutting mode. So, it was a very different climate. This is more about not saving programs or saving staff positions. This is more about taking our district to the next level.
Yeah, because we can just come out of a budget reduction committee.
Yeah. And I think people would be more responsive because we can say, hey, these are things we want to do. We need the money to do it, and so we can prioritize those things. We need the money so we can sit and say, hey, we want to spend this on staff, this on strings, or this on engineering, or just those different things. That way, we can start putting price tags on things.
Yeah.
But that would give us a better, if it passed, hopefully it does, and we get it on the ballot, then we can start tagging those price tags, and people will say, hey, they're actually doing what they said they were going to do.
And that goes right down to the budget planning process, using this as our, our benchmark for setting our budget priorities each and every year. So, one scenario I could do is say, bring you, and really, at this point, we can try to do more analysis and give you some more scenarios and update some data on comparable information for the most current year. But realistically, we'll have to have resolution language in front of you at that January 18th meeting. And based on the general conversation I'm hearing, I could bring you a draft that says 65 cents, one that says 70 or 75, or we can do 70, 75, 80. You give me a, a kind of the parameters, and I can bring you a couple of different drafts. And then that decision can be made that night based on additional information that we would collect between now and then.
What are you...
Oh, I'm sorry.
Well, I think another thing that would be important, we've talked about how, how do we communicate this? How do we communicate that 30 cents? And honestly, before we vote on it, I'd like to see some ideas about how we're going to communicate that. We, we can't wait. We need to be working on that now. Because if, if, if you all come up with something really good, it's going to be a lot easier. It'll change my mind if, as opposed to if we can't come up with how we're going to communicate that. That's a challenge. It's going to be difficult.
Right.
So, I think seeing how, some ideas on how we might communicate that might change.
Well, and, and I think there are, there's two different questions there, or two different approaches to that. One is, how do we make it... One is, how do we make it look as obvious as it possibly can be in terms of presentation? And the other part of it is, what is your overall approach to communication? In that I would not anticipate anything coming out from us information-wise that does not have both numbers, side by side with an explanation as to why there's, why they're there. That's gonna become standard.
Fifty equals eighty.
Yeah.
Yeah. You know, but, but we need to know.
Yeah.
We need to have that concept, or it won't do us any good, you know, if, if we can't explain it.
I'm, I'm thinking more like the net fifty or net forty-five, because.
Okay, well, so I was gonna start. We don't need to decide that now.
Exactly, exactly.
By January, when we're voting, we need to have some concept of how we're gonna do that. Yeah, Ruth, okay, so Ruth.
I'm sorry.
Give me, give me a range, give me, give me the three numbers you would like to know, and I'm going around. So he had asked for, do you want sixty, sixty-five, seventy? Do you want seventy, seventy-five, eighty? Give me your range.
Seventy, seventy-five, eighty.
Paul, your range.
I, I just think seventy-five's a good number.
Okay, Susan? Same as Ruth, Maria?
I like seventy-five, I think eighty is gonna, people have PTSD, and they're just gonna.
Set it more to the edge.
Kim, what range do you like?
Yeah, seventy-five, I think eighty's bad, just from the historical context.
I, I, that's fine. What range would you like to see?
I, I think seventy-five is a good number to rest on.
Okay, I would like to see seventy, seventy-five, I, I like seventy-five.
We do seventy and seventy-five, kind of what I'm hearing, that pretty, or do you want to include, some people had eighty, so.
No, if we're not favored, I'm fine with that.
Are we backing off of that? That was, I think, early from.
I, I, I'm comfortable with eighty, but at the same time, you know, if, if there is, I don't want people to have flashback moments when they enter the polling booth and, and, and vote no. I think PTSD is a good description of it, you know, so I'm, I'm comfortable with seventy-five. And, and, and looking, looking forward, you know, I, I think, you know, five years in the future, I think we'll look back to this day, and I think that, that the district will be able to take credit for a lot of the growth that comes around our district, because having a, a, an educated workforce is one of the main attractors and drivers in economic development. And, you know, one of the things that people are clamoring for is to have that educated workforce, and I think the decision that we make tonight is going to impact that in the future. And I, I think we'll look back and say, you know, this was a direct result because of the decision that, that we made as a board.
And there's another data point that hits to that point exactly, and that is this. If you look over the last five years and look at our enrollment trends, our kindergarten classes have been coming to us with about four hundred students in them each and every year, four hundred to four hundred and ten, very consistent since the housing recession, and the numbers dropped off a little bit. I attributed originally to having those smaller kindergarten classes to the recession and people not expanding their families. Well, I've got a different pattern now, I've seen enough data to tell me that our, our grade levels are growing from that four hundred range at kindergarten to four sixty to four eighty, or even five hundred by the time they get to middle school. What that means is, families are making a conscious decision to move into our district when their kids are already in school. That's a good, healthy sign, and, and I think those are the big players in our community in terms of sharing with us that they have the perception that there's a quality school district with value that they're bringing their kids to. So that growth trend has gotten consistent enough for me now to know that it, it's, it's recruit, we are recruiting people to our community with our school district, and I think it's a two-way street. The quality of our community in support of the school district is a, is a two-way paradigm, if you will, so.
Any other questions or comments? I think, do you have anything else?
I think we'll do the seventy and seventy-five, unless somebody really wants to see the eighty. Well, we could always do three and then.
You know, show us the eighty for comparison.
I would agree.
Ju- just, just so that we can see exactly what that might translate to.
I, I know it won't translate to this, but if it translates between whether or not we do STEAM or not, then I would like to know that, so that we can say, well, we're gonna do eighty so we can get STEAM. I know it's not gonna come down to that, but I would be willing to do that if it's knocking something out that's pretty important.
All right, I appreciate that feedback. This is obviously a very important decision for you as a board and our community in total. And I will just tell you that I, I know we've tried to lay a lot of groundwork in the last several years to get to this point, we're ready for this opportunity. Again, I think it's unique compared to what we've had the opportunity to pass with that thirty cent offset. I'll, I'll give the board and my, and our entire team my commitment that whatever you decide, we're gonna, we're gonna get out there and educate our community and try to share that need and give, give them the opportunity to help take us to that next level, if you will.
Dr. Monses, thank you and all your staff for all of the work that you put into not only this, but all the things that have laid the groundwork to get us here, so thank you. If there's no other questions or comments, this meeting's adjourned.
Thanks, everybody.